Okay, we can get started. Okay. So Claudia, I guess we'll get the staff report from you?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioners and members of the public, this is a design review, a height variance, and a conditional use permit application for a 200-unit extended stay hotel at the 2.1-acre site known as the Pritzker Site located at the south edge of the public market area adjacent to the Powell Street overcrossing, the railroad to the east, and the public market parking lot on the other sides. The application has been before you, once before this, in March 1996, you reviewed some preliminary plans and requested major design revisions regarding the height, the massing, and the lack of architectural interest in detailing. Since that time, the architect has presented new plans which you have before you tonight, and in the interim, we did the staff analysis and prepared an initial study in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, which included separate traffic studies, a visual analysis, and a shadow study. The finding from that initial study was that with mitigations imposed, the potentially significant impacts of this project could be reduced to a less than significant impact or less than significant level, and those focused on geological limitations of the site, erosion, and potential traffic conflicts at Christie and Shellmount. As I noted, the project has gone through major design revisions since you first looked at it in March 96, and I will reserve the detailed explanation for those revisions with the actual applicant and architect later on in my presentation. There have been a number of issues here that we've had to address throughout the course of review of this project, and one of the more important ones is the parking. We determined that 218 spaces were required to meet the zoning ordinance requirement, which by the way is our threshold of significance determination through the California Environmental Quality Act. It's whether we meet the parking requirements in our zoning ordinance. The applicant has done that through the provision of 82 onsite spaces on the 2.1-acre site, and an additional 120 spaces on two parcels east of the site, which are owned by the redevelopment agency and the Christie Avenue Partnership. In addition to that, this property enjoys a reciprocal parking agreement with Christie Avenue Partnership, who owns and operates the public market area, so then in addition to 14 spaces are shared through that mutual parking agreement. With that, we have fulfilled the parking requirements contained or in our zoning ordinance. In addition to meeting the parking requirements, we also looked at parking demand, both from the hotel's point of view and from the neighboring context. We found that the demand could be met or was no problem at most times of the week. There were however, times of the week during the weekend when the theater use parking requirements or demands are highest, and when viewed in relation to the parking supply that will result from both this improvement to this property, as well as the reconstruction and restriping considered for the Bay Shellmount Street, which will run through the public market project and will be constructed during the next four to six months, we find that the parking demand can be met, and there really isn't a problem here, simply because the overall parking supply at the end of the construction of Bay Shellmount and the parking for the hotel will actually increase the total number of spaces available at the public market. In addition to that, when these parking counts were being taken this summer, there are a number of parking spaces, perhaps up to 40 or 50, which have been blocked off because of the construction of the pedestrian overcrossing between the public market area and the other side of the tracks at the Amtrak station. Another major aspect or issue with this particular application regards the height of the hotel. The park, excuse me, the height limit for this area is 40 feet, and with the approval of a conditional use permit, the zoning ordinance allows up to 55 feet. At this point, the plans call for the hotel at the roof level to be 120 feet, and then an additional height for the core elevator tower at the center of the building. We have looked at this in relation to processing a variance application, and find that the findings that are required to process a variance application can be made in this particular instance for this property. We note that there are physical constraints on the property, including the major barriers of the Powell Street overpass and the railroad, which present major physical constraints to developing a hotel when looked at in regard to the physical requirements of a hotel, including access, design requirements, program uses, and floor plates. In addition to that, we found that with the imposition of the height, the strict imposition of the height limit, that the 2.0 floor area ratio that is permitted for this site could not be attained when you looked at the physical requirements required for a hotel site on this property. The visual and shadow studies that were completed for the initial study found no impact or less than significant impact. We completed them specifically because we were looking at this building being higher than the height limit, and wanted to assure ourselves that there would be no material impacts as a result of the increased height. The height variance can also be addressed with regard to looking at the context within which we find ourselves in this corridor of Powell Street. There are a number of other high-rise buildings in the perimeter of this site, including the Holiday Inn, the Days Inn, the Public Market Office Tower, and the First Interstate Building. In addition to that, to the east, Chiron has an approved office tower as a part of their PUD application, which could reach up to 230 feet. With that, we believe that the public, or the urban design fabric that's been created along this segment of Powell is very conducive and would not, that this building would not disrupt that, that the high-rise nature of buildings hugging the Powell Street corridor is a typical fabric that's been developed over the last 10 to 15 years, and that this building would fit within that context. I have required or have recommended to you a number of conditions of approval regarding this permit, including making sure that the certain design aspects of the construction are met, including making sure that the recesses of the windows and the balconies meet minimum standards, that the mitigation measures that have been required or recommended by the initial study are incorporated, and that the standard requirements we have regarding full improvements along the street edge, street trees, full improvement plans for the site are incorporated into the conditions of approval. I'll be glad to address any specific ones that you've got. We have received two pieces of correspondence during the last week regarding this project, and the property owner or the developer of property immediately to the east at the Amtrak site, the Waram Development Company, has expressed a number of concerns focused on the design, massing, and bulk of the proposed structure. A letter dated August 20th was in your packets from Rich Robbins, and this afternoon at quarter of five, we received a packet of material from Mr. Robbins' counsel, Jeff Allen, and you have that at your desks. At this point, I will try to respond a little bit to the major points raised in Mr. Robbins' letter, which in some regard relate also to Mr. Allen's packet of material. Mr. Robbins has asserted that an environmental impact report should be prepared for this project. We found that there were no significant adverse impacts that could not be mitigated, and therefore, we went ahead with the preparation of a mitigated negative declaration. In order to prepare or in order to require an EIR, you need to assert that there are insignificant, I mean, excuse me, or significant impacts or significant unavoidable impacts, and through the analysis contained in the initial study, including the traffic study, the visual analysis, and the shadow study, we couldn't determine that. This building, as proposed, is at least 300 feet away from any existing or proposed structure, so we find it hard to assert that there would be impacts to light or air as a result of the height of this building. Height by itself is not an environmental impact. This is not along a visually significant corridor or a designated scenic corridor. There has been an assertion that there will be potential wind or air movement changes, and there might be a wind tunnel effect. Normally, those kinds of impacts are associated with downtown areas where you have a number of large structures or high structures spaced or clustered close together, and the impact is felt most significantly straight down from the building elevation, that's the highest. We found that, given that, again, this building is at least 300 feet away from any existing or proposed building, that no impacts were identified, but nevertheless, to meet the concern or any potential concern, we have called for a wind analysis to be performed prior to the completion of the building permit submittal for this permit, and that's contained in your recommended condition of approval V or 5F6, to make sure that there will not be any immediate changes of downward air movements in the vicinity. Any recommendations from that study would be incorporated into the final design. In terms of the shadow analysis, the comment has been received that the shadow analysis was not extended past 3:00. We have done a standard shadow study following standard methodology, which includes four times of the year, the spring and fall equinox, and the winter and summer times, the shortest and longest days of the year, and looked at three times of the day when shadows would be most prominent, or shadowing from a building would be most of a problem, 10:00 AM, 12:00 PM, and 3:00 PM. Given that the results of this study did not indicate a significant shadow impact, and the fact that you have no resonances around there or significant sensitive receptors such as a park or other open space area, we did not feel that further analysis was warranted in this direction or necessary. The traffic study that was completed for this project included the Chiron Life Sciences Center project at the minimum build, which was 590,000 square feet. There's an assertion in Mr. Robbins' letter that Chiron was not included. It was included in the baseline traffic, as well as other cumulative growth that was expected from the CIBASE draft EIR, which was published in December 95, that provided us a very comprehensive assessment of the baseline traffic conditions expected for the year 1996. With regard to parking, as I noted, the parking demand is not a problem, and the parking requirement of the zoning ordinance is met. The last issue I will address is aesthetic and design issues. This seems to be the focus of the most amount of concern for Mr. Robbins. I will note to you that I think that as experts can disagree about traffic, geology, wind, experts can also disagree a lot about design, and a lot of work has been done on this building in the last couple of months since the commission has seen it. To offset the mass and bulk and sort of triangular block image that you first reviewed, the architect reduced the building width by 80 feet and stepped the building up in stories varying from five to 12 stories in height. You had given the direction that pulling the building up to get more break of the mass and the bulk of the building was something that should be considered, and the architect took the commission at his word, and has produced, I think, a very visually pleasing building, which includes a variety of different roof heights, balconies, different building planes, trellises, and a very rich landscaping plan on the ground floor level. With that, I conclude my staff comments at this point. I will be glad to address specific commission comments or questions, and we recommend that you do adopt this project or approve this project tonight through the adoption of the resolution before you, which would approve the design review, the conditional use permit, and the height variance for this building, as well as adopt the mitigated negative declaration.
Commissioners, questions?
I have a question of clarification. When you talk about the 120 parking spaces to the east, is that the original property where the Bay Street was going to be?
Part of that is, and then part of it is another parcel strip owned by the Christie Avenue Partnership.
What are you going to do, lease that to them, or are you going to sell it to them?
I'm pretty sure it's going to be through a lease agreement. That's what's proposed.
I believe that's right.
But that's the property we're talking about, right? Because Bay Street's going to go in front now?
Right, and that is, the strip that we own was the former Bay Shellmount right-of-way, and we actually will improve that whole right-of-way to increase the parking capacity in that area.
Thank you.
I have a number of questions, and most of them are related to this letter from Waram Development, and I will have a lot of comments at the end, but I just want to get some baseline here. First of all, has Waram Development been in contact with you during this process? Let's see, this project's been going on for what, six months or something like that? And have you had meetings or contact with Waram Development during that period?
Yes, when the building was first proposed, given that we are also in the process of reviewing a proposal, a proposed master plan development at the Waram site, we contacted Mr. Robbins and actually met with him to make sure that the revised plans for the hotel were considered directly by him, and that he viewed the changes that were submitted to city staff between the time you first saw the original plans and the revised plans. That meeting occurred in May, and I was in attendance along with city planner Cro Marti and Gary Stugart, the project manager from Hardage, and Mr. Robbins was in attendance at that meeting and expressed a great deal of positive comment about how well the design had progressed, and we, our conclusion from that meeting was he basically had signed off on the design.
Okay, that brings up a very interesting point. I had a phone call from Mr. Robbins last week, and he indicated that in no way implicitly or explicitly did he okay this design, and so Barry, you concur with Claudia's assessment of that?
Yeah, I think it was very clear that he had come in, and he, at the very outset of the meeting, expressed the fact that he had had concerns. The applicant brought out a model, much the same model that you're seeing, and may be the exact ones, and Mr. Robbins at that point said, "Oh, I see a lot of work has been done, and I see that the concerns I had have been basically addressed." So I know I left the meeting with a distinct impression that he had been very satisfied with the changes, and we felt that we were on the right track.
Okay. Question on parking. This is an extended stay hotel, and is it fair to assume, and this is just some information that might be helpful, is it fair to assume that some of these people will be coming out of state by public transportation and staying at the hotel for Chiron or some of the other large corporations, and won't really even have an automobile?
Yes, and in the traffic study and parking study that was done for the initial study, we looked at some extended stay hotels down in the South Bay, and were able to survey them, and actually, we caught them on a night where there was 100% occupancy, and the parking ratio was on the low side. Nevertheless, we used a conservative parking demand assumption in the study to make sure that we looked at it with regard to worst case.
Okay. What was the size of the old Westinghouse building? Did you figure that out?
No, I couldn't get those plans. I apologize.
Did you remember? What was it, 90 feet?
You mean the height?
The height.
No.
Okay.
The old Westinghouse, yeah, that they tore down?
During this process, outside of the two pieces of paper you got this week, did you get any other correspondence from Waram Development?
No, I didn't. And the calls that I did receive expressing very serious concerns started when the negative declaration was published at the beginning of August.
Okay. And on the visual, the shadow study, you stopped it at 3:00, right, 3:00 PM?
That's the standard methodology that's used.
Okay, now, are we saying, from your experience, that anything after that, the shadows become less of an impact?
I believe that the study should be looked upon within the context of what you're doing here, or the context of the site. Mr. Robbins has asserted that a lot of other studies and analysis was done for the Chiron project. Well, that was necessary, given where we found ourselves on that site. That building was 300 feet proposed, and there were houses and a park nearby, so again, the level of analysis you do should fit within what you're expecting with regard to impact. So we started the shadow study with a very standard analysis, as you see there. Based on the results of that study, we felt like that was a sufficient level of analysis to reach the conclusion that it was less than significant. December 21st at 4:00, it's beginning to get dark. I just need to say that that's happening then.
Okay. Okay, that's all the questions I have right now. Any other questions?
No, I'm still confused with this Bay Street. I thought it was going in one end of the parking of the market, and I understand it's going up the other end.
Do you want to point it out?
Yeah, would you please? Oh, yeah, can you use that?
Okay, this is going, this is the Powell Street overpass, Powell Street overpass, and the original alignment was Christie, Shellmount was here. The original alignment was hugging the railroad tracks to the east. What has happened is that the road has been shifted to the west, and then will come up by the entrance to the public market, swing to the west, and then go straight up in alignment with the railroad tracks again. Once it's past the borders books here, it will swing and roll up to Bay Street. Is that clear? The original alignment went right up over here?
No, I understand. But I do not understand how, when you do all this fooling around with spaces, you seem to be gaining spaces all the time, and I don't understand that. And I also want to comment at the same time, and maybe you can, now, they tell me, they say in their letter, "We require 202 spaces for this hotel," correct?
Well, they said in their letter 202, and we calculated, based on the employment that they'd have onsite at any given time, and the requirements of our zoning ordinance, that it was 218.
200, so by rights, we should have 218 spaces.
For the hotel, that's correct.
And they will have 218 without having to park under the overpass.
Right, they will have 83 on their property, an additional 120 directly to the east on two parcels that are strips of land, one owned by the Christie Avenue Partnership and one owned by the redevelopment agency, and then they have rights to use the parking in the general public market area, that they will have to depend at the worst case on up to 14 spaces for that in this area. And what we have done is that in, by incorporating Bay Shellmount along here, we are gaining some efficiency with regard to striping plans and the use of compact and regular-sized spaces in a more efficient pattern, and that's how we're gaining the spaces. And then using the city right-of-way that was once devoted to the, just to overflow parking for the public market, that that now becomes a very efficient and improved parking area for either the public market or the hotel.
But you realize that on the weekend, they're not going to have any spaces extra up there.
We realize that that's when the demand is the highest.
Pardon?
We realize that that is when demand is the highest.
Right, because I've had people tell, talk to me about that, that they don't understand how a big place can go in like that and expect to have parking area.
Well, because...
With the park in the way it is now.
Because of the nature of the hotel business where peak demand for the hotel is during the week, actually, this is a good use because peak demand for the hotel is actually lowest during the weekend.
There's a couple more questions here, I think. I think I'll wait till later to make more comments, please.
Okay, anybody else have any comments? Okay, let's open the public hearing. The public hearing is open. Anybody wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward. Okay. State your name for the record, please.
My name is Jeff Allen. I confess to being an attorney, and I confess to representing Waram Development Corporation and Rich Robbins, which, Waram Development, as you know, is one of the more substantial and established developers in the Emeryville area. I will tell you that, excuse me, I've been involved representing Waram Development for most of the last 20 years, and have been involved in the projects that Waram has done in the Emeryville area, and I'm proud to have been a part of what I consider to be substantial and very well-thought-out development in the Emeryville area. And I think that Emeryville should be congratulated on what it has done in terms of well-thought-out development. But there is a problem with this particular development that's being proposed, the Woodfin Development, and Mr. Robbins has concerns about it because of his concerns about the overall well-being of Emeryville. I don't live in Emeryville, I live in Oakland, but I come to Emeryville frequently, both for recreation and for business. I will tell you that I share with Mr. Robbins at a personal level some of the concerns which he has expressed regarding the proposed Woodfin Development. My family and I like to come to the Emery Bay Theater. Everybody has noted that the weekends are pretty crowded with respect to parking. I will tell you, there have been Saturdays that we've come to the theater and left because there were no parking spaces. So I'm very concerned about the concept of shared parking between a new hotel and the Emeryville Theater. Parking is at a premium and sometimes non-existent already, and that's before Chiron's built. That's before this hotel is built. I will tell you also that because I frequently am involved in business transactions that relate to Emeryville, I've had the reason to commute to Emeryville for business meetings in the mornings on a fairly regular basis over the course of the last 10 or 12 years, and I've noticed that within the last year or so, the traffic has become much more heavy, much more significant, much more of a problem. And then again, this is still before even the beginning of Phase 1 of the Chiron campus, let alone the full development of the Chiron campus, plus any other development, and there's a lot of other stuff on the drawing boards, as you well know. Professionally, on behalf of Mr. Robbins and on behalf of Waram Development Company, I need to advise you that we have serious concerns, not about the fact that there's going to be a hotel there. We think a hotel is probably the highest and best use for that particular area. We think there should be a hotel there, and we don't have any problem with the Hardage Group coming in and putting a hotel there. What we do have a problem with is this particular plan, this particular proposal, and the way it's being processed by the city. This is something that is so major, so significantly at variance with the general plan and with the zoning ordinance, that it is inappropriate, wholly inappropriate, to consider doing it on a variance with respect to height. I would point out to the members of the commission that the requirements of your own ordinance with respect to variances require that you make five separate and distinct findings that... none of which can be appropriately made with respect to this particular case. You have to find, in order for the planning commission to grant a variance, it shall find that because of special circumstances applicable to the property, including size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings, the strict application of the zoning ordinance deprives that property of privileges enjoyed by other property in the vicinity under identical zoning classifications. That's not a situation which exists here. You also have to find that the variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of substantial property rights possessed by other conforming property in the same vicinity, and that the variance, if granted, would not constitute a special privilege of the recipient, consistent with limitations upon other properties in the vicinity. Again, that's not the situation here. In fact, the converse, the converse is true, that if you do grant a variance, you are creating a special privilege for this piece of property. Third, you have to find that the granting of the variance will not be materially detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare, or will not supply, or, excuse me, will not impair an adequate supply of light and air to adjacent property. That requires a specific finding. I would recommend that that requires a detailed study, which has not been done by planning staff or by the city or by the applicant, and that if you're going to make that finding, you need to have the expert evaluations that justify that kind of a factual finding. Fourth, you have to find that the conditions upon which the requested variance is based would not be applicable generally to other property within the same zoning classification. And, in fact, what the planning director has suggested to you is that there are already some tall buildings there, so let's put one more in. So, perhaps what we're really doing is ignoring the zoning ordinance, and we're just going to put in these tall buildings, even though there is a cap on height in the zoning ordinance, and all these properties generally are in the same situation, which is exactly what the variance ordinance says you cannot do. And finally, E, or the number 5, 5 finding that you must make, is that either the variance is so insignificant that granting it would not be incompatible with the general plan, or the potentially adverse effects of the variance on the plan, which would be avoided by denying the variance, are exceeded by individual hardship, which would be relieved by granting the variance. It's very difficult to justify under any stretch of the imagination that a variance from 40 to 140 feet is insignificant. But that's what we're talking about. My concern is that the city is, for whatever reason, contemplating doing something that is inappropriate, that cannot be appropriately done, correctly done, under the terms of your own variance ordinance. My concern is also that there are not adequate studies that have been done with respect to this property, and that a significant amount of studying should be done before any decision is made. In fact, the planning director has suggested to you that we should have a wind study. Well, how can you make a determination that there will not be significant wind impact before you have the wind study? If this wind study is necessary at all, then it should be done before there's a determination that it's an insignificant impact. The shadow study, yeah, it's true, they follow, as far as we can tell, normal procedures with respect to a shadow study at high noon, but you don't have to be a rocket scientist to know that at high noon, you don't have a lot of shadows. You don't have shadows in the middle of the day. You have them at the beginning of the day. You have them at the end of the day, because that's when the light comes at an angle that hits the building, so that it casts the shadows. So, the real concern is what happens at 3:00 to 5:00, or 6:00. And not just on December 21, but during all the summer months, when light and air is pleasant and everybody would like to have more of it. If you have a large shadow cast between 3:00 and 7:00, well, we don't know that. There was no study done. Study was cut off at 3:00, when we know shadows are insignificant. Now, I don't want to take a lot of time of the members of the planning commission. As I indicated to you in my letter, there are two attorneys that have been retained, two firms that have been retained by Mr. Robbins and by Wareham Development Corporation with respect to these issues. Steve Koskow of the McCutcheon Firm, who is one of the experts in SEQA, in the state, in fact, was one of the authors of the Continuing Education of the Bar Book on SEQA, has been retained in addition to myself. He's presented a detailed letter, most of which I have summarized for you, but he's gone into more detail and more specifics in his letter, which was attached to the letter which I submitted to you. And next to that is a memorandum that was sent to Mr. Koskow from EIP Associates, who are environmental consultants, doing a preliminary evaluation of the negative declaration proposal. And you also have Mr. Robbins' letter, all of which we would ask be treated as part of the record with respect to this proceeding. Once again, I want to make Mr. Robbins' position very clear. We do not oppose the hotel. We do not intend to try to oppose the hotel. We do concern ourselves with the appropriateness of granting a variance for height of this magnitude. We do concern ourselves with the appropriateness of a negative declaration when you have so many unknowns. You have a shadow study that stops at 3:00 and doesn't consider the day, part of the day when the shadows are the longest. You have no wind study to speak of, and a recommendation from the planning director that a wind study should be done as a condition of your approval. I would, as I mentioned earlier, suggest that it needs to be done before you can determine whether or not you have a mitigatable significant problem, an unmitigated significant problem, an insignificant problem, or a massive problem. Traffic, we know, is an increasing problem in Emeryville, and I don't think it's appropriately mitigated by a traffic light, but there is a gentleman here in the audience who is a traffic consultant, who will address you more specifically on that. We are also concerned about the overall aesthetics. Emeryville is a city that is taking a very major position in terms of the way it presents itself to the outside world. And the way you present yourself to the outside world is going to be defined by the buildings that you allow to be constructed in your city, and what they do and what they look like. And I would suggest to you that while I recognize that beauty is in the eye of the beholder, the mass issues with respect to this large wall that are being, that is being proposed, excuse me, are such that it does not fit in well with the rest of the area, and that there are aesthetic issues that need to be considered, along with the environmental issues and the economic impact, that those significant environmental impacts may have on the properties which are adjacent or nearby to the proposed development site, which have already been developed, or which have plans for development that may be negatively impacted by the construction of a building of this type in nature. So, with that, unless the members of the commission have any questions, I'm prepared to sit down. Thank you for your consideration.
I'm pleased to be here today. I'd like to preface my comments with a few statements. First of all, I think staff's done a very good job to date. They started from a position where they had a highly unacceptable project, and they've brought it along a good distance. And I think appropriately, it's here now for further evaluation, and we are appearing in that spirit. I would echo the comments about Mr. Robbins' feelings about the project, and I think that what has happened, very simply, is if you look at this negative declaration, and you look at the view from the Amtrak station, which, as you probably know, I was the architect for, you see that the entire sky is obliterated by the building. The project is overwhelming in size as compared to that, and that's not that small a building. And I think the model, when you look at it in the aspect, the relationship, as I just turned it to you, and you look at the Amtrak station in that model, and the relationship of that building to the Amtrak station, I think you get a much better idea of the scale of what we're dealing with here, rather than some small, white foam things or a fairly nice drawing. I'd also like to say that, in referencing my marks, that I know Doug Austin, he's a fine architect, and I'm very glad that the project sponsor has brought him on board, and a lot of good has happened in that sense. But nonetheless, there are several very important issues that remain there. Planning issues, and, as I say, I'm glad to bring them before you. In the first, it's the height and bulk issue. There's nothing wrong with height, and there's nothing wrong with a low building being bulky, but a large, tall, high, bulky building is a real problem. I spent a good deal of time in the past week looking at some of the old buildings, or older buildings around town, 2200 Powell Street, 2000, the Holiday Inn. In its horizontal dimensional aspects, this building is the same or exceeds some of those buildings. Those are very large buildings. I consider that, in some ways, kind of the bad old days of Emeryville in terms of the planning, and today, so much good is happening in Emeryville that I have a very high level of concern of this combination of height and bulk. And I think that you seriously need to consider that, and although there are large buildings in this area, and they are widely spaced apart, this building does exceed them to such an extent, and the fact that the height variance that is being proposed is three times the allowable height for the area, and more than two times the allowable height under a conditional use, I would suggest to you that that's a very serious consideration and allowance. And to call that something that can be done under a negative declaration, in my personal experience for many years, I find that that is something that really can't be acceptably done. Second thing I'd tell you is that, dealing with the aesthetic issues, as you may know, we are the design consultants for the Pacific Park Plaza Building. Pacific Park Plaza Building is being completely re-clad. The reason the building is being completely re-clad is because the material that the building is made of, what is commonly known as drive-it or EPIS, is fundamentally an unsound material. There's just been a finding, and it's been published in an article in the American Specifier, which I have sent to the city, that this material has caused long-term widespread damage through a decay of the material, and we have stopped using the material, and we strongly recommend against it in any of our projects. The material has been shown both in tall and small buildings, and especially in tall buildings, to degrade to the point where water infiltration is a serious and nonpreventable problem, and then the water is contained behind the skin. The material has a very thin shell, which must be coated or painted, and repeatedly painted if it's going to be, have any integrity, and its integrity is highly in question by a broad spectrum of experts these days. And in doing so, its visual appearance is a very thin, cheap, superficial appearance, like, you know, a painted house only 140 feet tall. So, although this is a very nice picture, and although the architecture, the direction of the architecture suggests a very nice direction, when you look at six to eight uninterrupted stories of a flat EPIS with some thin joint lines, and then some articulated punch windows, I think that from an aesthetic point of view, you have really a lot of questions that you must ask. I think these are very significant. Now, the shadow study issue. If you look at the document, in fact, the shadow at 3:00 P.M. in December is significant. It is not not significant. It obliterates the Amtrak station outdoor waiting area, and it obliterates it in the worst time of the year to obliterate it, when it's the coolest, in December, in the winter, and in November, and in January. And when we do get sunny days in those days, it's very nice to go out and enjoy that open space and wait for the trains, and a lot of people wait for the trains outside. And at 3:00 P.M., if you look at the shadow diagram, for the most part, the station area is fully involved in shadow, and that is a significant finding. And further, after 3:00 P.M., although the studies have stopped, and I have been involved in dozens, more than dozens, of these studies on many, many buildings around the Bay Area of all sizes, scales, locations. After 3:00 P.M., the shadow impacts in and around the station area, and as you know, we are studying that, are more significant, especially in the winter. And as you know, or you may know, the plan we're proposing for the station area contains extensive public open space, a lot of landscape space, because the project sponsor is very committed to that, especially between the station area and the proposed office building. And that's the first thing that's going to be fully involved in the afternoon, not only in the winter, but for most of the year, by shadow from this building. And that is not studied. There's no cumulative study between the proposal, which is already well-known to the city, and that building. And these things have to happen before this can be done. And I would echo what the attorney said about the wind. You can't adopt this without finding things about the wind, and your staff's already said, "Well, we have to study the wind now." Well, of course, you have to study the wind. In fact, the new overpass, the crossing that we've worked on with the city, with you, the crossing is less than 250 feet away from this building. This is a major wind area. You know that. This is a major facade facing directly perpendicular to the wind. The downwash from the wind and the displacement from the wind, and I myself know quite a bit about this, but you can go to Don Bellantia Davis, who is the expert, and I've studied many of our projects with him. The downwash from the wind and the displacement from the wind can, and probably will, have significant hazardous impacts, both in front of and on the sides of this building, as all that wind, uninterrupted and unimpeded to this spot, goes around that building and comes right to the Amtrak overpass and overcrossing, the brand-new place, which is the most important pedestrian link between east and west in this area, and creates a significant problem, or can create a significant problem, and must be studied by you before you can make any judgment. Finally, let me go back to the landscape again, and this business of shadowing. I think a review of what we're proposing as far as landscape and public space in relationship to the project we're proposing is quite nice, and I think socially very conscious. This proposal, as far as its landscape plan, is de minimis. It's non-existent. The only landscape on this is a closed-off, private pool area, some tree planting, and a few bushes. This landscape plan, in fact, makes me ill. There is no landscape plan, and I don't think that all of the effort that we've gone into with the Amtrak site and the building, and the other things, the good things that are happening in this town, that a complete ignoring of that context, a totally suburban surface parking lot with one tree every 30 feet, or whatever it is, that's probably, you know, some five- or 10-gallon stick for more years than I can count, in any way satisfies what this city should be demanding for one of its more major, new proposed projects. So, let me thank you for your time. I think there are many serious questions, genuine questions. I think that the negative declaration, in light of the things you've heard, and in light of the things that you will hear about traffic, I mean, you have conflicts of experts, you have conflicts of information, can't possibly be adopted tonight. And I would close by saying that if the project sponsor was more cooperative in responding to some of our concerns, which they have not been, they have basically said, "Well, we're going to go with what we go with," that this issue could go away, because none of us are opposed to the project or the concept of the project. We think a hotel's a great idea. But to put a wall well over 200 feet long, 12 stories tall, completely against the wind, and with no relief of landscape there, is not the right answer, not in this public space. Thank you.
We got the letter that refers to the article about drive-it, but we didn't get the article about drive-it. I wonder if we could be provided with a copy of that article at some point?
Sure.
Good evening, Commissioner, and Director Capio. My name is John Twitchell. I'm a transportation planning consultant. I have been for the last 17 years. Prior to that, I worked for the City Planning Department in San Francisco, was head of the Transportation Section there. One of the areas I do quite a bit of work in is writing transportation segments for environmental documents, particularly negative declarations. Over the last few years, I've done these sort of things for people like Safeway, McDonald's, The Price Club, Smart &amp; Final, The... The Price Club, Smart &amp; Final, the 49ers, maybe Restaurant, a bunch of things of that ilk. So I have some expertise in this area. I was asked on rather short notice to take a look at this traffic study. I must say, your director described it in far more professional tones than the study itself. I have, in my years of looking at these things, rarely seen a study that was more inadequate in a whole host of ways than the traffic study that's involved with this particular negative declaration. I have some written comments. Let me pass a couple of copies around. The point to me is this, there are certain industry standard practices that are followed in doing traffic studies. They have to do in equal parts with good old common sense and with numbers and technical I was rather amazed, I have to say, in reading this so-called traffic study. I would call it dartboard numbering. Numbers were picked for trip generation out of a book. And the standard industry practice in looking at trip generation on a unique use such as this is to go to several different analogous uses, several other all-suite hotels, do both trip generation and parking off those uses so you have some real-life survey information and then do your travel demand and other things of that nature off those numbers. When you do travel demand, it's not a gee-whiz. For instance, this is a Safeway in San Francisco. The travel demand analysis is two pages' worth of numbers. I mean, it's not like, "Well, we'll pick this number here and do something with it." The parking portion of this document, to me, was equally amazing. The fellows who did the study went over to a hotel on a Wednesday night and went out and counted the spaces and said, "Gee whiz, this is an appropriate parking demand number." It is standard industry procedure again, when you look at either parking or trip generation, to look at the PM peak, which is the heaviest commuter travel time, and in the case of this particular area, to look at the peak of retail use because this hotel is being dropped into a major retail area. The long term of this is pretty simple. You've got a 200-suite hotel with a parking requirement of well over 200 spaces and a parking lot of 80 spaces. As inadequate as the traffic study is, it clearly points out that at the present time, all of the other spaces that are used here to supposedly meet the parking requirement are already full. They're used for retail and theater use. I mean, to say that those are available, you know, words fail me. I will be polite about this, but it's a shell game. You cannot count the same parking twice for retail and for hotel and say this meets the parking requirement. The fact of the matter is it doesn't. I would respectfully submit to you that within the negative declaration, parking needs to be discussed as a significant issue that needs mitigation. The analysis that has been done here does not even reflect the report, as woefully inadequate as it is. The practical point of all of this is I do happen to be involved in a substantial sequel litigation matter at the moment. And despite the difficulties with anyone pursuing sequel litigation these days, I would say to you that if you approve this neg-dec, particularly the traffic and parking in its present form, all you're doing is you're going to be running a lot of lawyers' meters. I can't imagine that this traffic study would be upheld in any court, given its present condition and its lack of using current industry standards or even the most basic of common sense in coming to its conclusions. It's unfortunate, but I think there's no other way to describe it. I don't know if any of you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them otherwise. Thank you.
Well, let me ask you this.
Yes.
The major problem you have outside of this study itself was the parking?
Well, let me say this. The study itself, in all of its portions, was not done to normal industry standards. There's no question that the real parking generation numbers aren't here, so you don't really know what parking demand is. There's no question that the real trip generation numbers aren't here and you don't really know if there are significant impacts on the adjacent intersections. I mean, practically speaking, people coming to this are going to be coming up I-80, coming off on Powell, going through a series of intersections and lights to get over to where this hotel is. Now, if the trip generation numbers are not these hotel things that were plucked out of a book somewhere, then you might indeed exceed the LOS for various intersections here. So there are a lot of problems. I think practically speaking, the largest problem is the fact that it doesn't seem to be any realistic aspects to this parking. It is a very large hotel with a very little bit of parking and this business of double counting parking that's already full for retail use makes no sense at all. I mean, how can you, you know, I mean, it's obvious what the situation is.
Okay, so it's the park.
That's the issue.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yes, please. Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, it's nice to be before you again and it's difficult to follow what I am now following, but I'll give it my best shot. I'm Gary Stugard with Hardage Suite Hotels. We are, in deference to Claudia, the owners of the site, so I hope that henceforth we can now call it the Hardage Site as opposed to the Pritzker Site. That has happened, by the way, since I was last before you in March. Given the last three speakers, I have one question really to pose before I continue and that is, I'm curious as to what Mr. Robbins' motivation for his litany of consultants before you tonight really is. I too attended the meeting that Claudia and Barry attended with Mr. Robbins in May. And I would go a step farther than Mr. Cromarty did in his response and say that Mr. Robbins' response was, "This is, quote-unquote, 'this is good design' and we, in Emeryville, who have a vested interest in the design in Emeryville or in the future of Emeryville, are most concerned about good design. If you are going to build this, are you really going to build this project?" was a question. And when I responded in the affirmative, he said, "This is great because this is good design." The model that was referred to earlier is in fact the model that's in front of Theresa Cho here. So as early as May, he had seen the configuration of the building in a form that's substantially the same as we now bring it to you. So I'm a little bit at a loss to understand why his concern's, number one. And number two, one particular concern I have as to one of the recent commenters is that we have attempted to be responsive to everyone and seek input from everyone and as to the assertion that we were not responsive to their concerns or to Mr. Robbins' concerns or chose to ignore them, I think is very far from the truth. In fact, we scheduled a meeting for last Wednesday, I believe, week ago yesterday, between Mr. Heller and our architect, Mr. Austin. And Mr. Pyatt took the city's, the architect the city had retained, to work with us throughout the process and also to review the design. So I believe we have been responsive and as you'll see in the presentation that we would now like to give you, we have also tried to be responsive to the concerns and issues that were brought up at that meeting. Very quickly, we listened the last time we were here. We got the clear impression that you were unhappy with what we've done. I think if you go to the end of the last meeting and remember that the question that I asked was, "I have an envelope to work with. I have a floor-to-air ratio of two, which is really incompatible with the height limit for this parcel of land. I asked that in light of that, you give us some flexibility in terms of how best to design a building that reconciled both of those factors." I think we've done that. We've come up with a building that's substantially smaller, 80 feet less wide than it was before. And if I dare bring up the, I dare not, actually. You asked us also for a building that was indicative of the gateway location that this project would occupy. In other words, something that was responsive to the fact that if we were going to come back to you with a building that had the presence that this one had by sheer location, that it make a statement. And I think we've done that. We've especially tried to do that with the tower, which we plan to light specially so that it gives some additional visual impact. As far as the overall height of the building goes, we've been, we were consistent with what you asked and that is that sections of the building come up to 12 stories. The fact that the elevator tower, in fact, was higher than 12 stories was really the result of discussions between ourselves and the planning department and Mr. Pyatt. We looked at several heights for the tower and it was agreed that this was the most visually attractive. If I can take a step back, one of the things that we did after we left you all was really to start with a clean sheet of paper. We went to the, I should point out that Mr. Austin is new to our project since we last met. We had a competition. We invited the architect that you met last time, Callison Partnership, one other group, and Mr. Austin to submit designs for us to really revisit this project. Mr. Austin's design clearly seemed to reflect the character of some of the more historic East Bay architecture, particularly an architect by the name of Maybeck, with whom you may be familiar. We thought that the design also communicated our desire to create a home away from home. We're sort of an extended-stay hotel, not in the vision of what you might see from some of the lesser-priced hotel chains that are propping up all over because we view our competition primarily as four-star, full-service hotels. And as you remember, we talked about that last time. We've added enough details to the building, I think, to make it interesting. We responded to your concerns as to the lack of variation of the elevations. We've done that by creating three or four separate modules, which, as Claudia said, go from five stories to 12 stories. We've added a trellis design, which will introduce some foliage to the building at levels above the ground. So I'm also at a loss to understand why we have been so ignorant as concerns landscaping. We've talked about the elevator tower and the gateway statement that we've tried to incorporate into the building. As for the concerns about the mass, I think what we've really tried to do is be responsive to the direction you gave us last time. I'd like to thank Michael Pyatt, by the way, for his continuous efforts to respond to us, meet with us. We had several meetings over the last four months with him and he gave us some very good input and very good critique. The only other things that I would really like to say before I turn it over to Mr. Austin and our in-house design person, Mr. Cruz, is that not only have we tried to create something that works within the context of the existing OPA for the site, which is approved by the City Council in 1989 in conjunction with the approval of the Emery Bay Marketplace project, we have also tried to go a step further and recapture some areas that perhaps would be lost until sometime in the future, although we have not been able to work this out with the planning staff yet. We would very much like to incorporate, we recognize parking as an issue and we would like to incorporate part of the area under the overpass, the Pall Street overpass as parking also. We are in the process of working with staff in the city to figure out the best way to do that and give everybody appropriate rights of way. With that, we are very, very excited about the plan. Understand that a hotel is not like an office building and it's very difficult to take a section of a building from one corner and tack it onto another corner because in order to build a hotel efficiently, you have to stack plumbing chases and HVAC chases. We work with a much tighter floor-to-floor height than do office buildings. And so every time we make a change to the outside of the building, it impacts everything that happens inside of the building. I'll let these gentlemen speak at length about that. With that, I thank you.
I'm Doug Austin, architect with the Austin Design Group. Mister Chairperson and fellow commissioners, it's a pleasure to be here in deference to your own schedule. I'll try not to be lengthy in my description. I think that a lot of the highlights of what we've been trying to do have been hit, but I'll maybe restate a few things. One with emphasis, when we were invited to have an opportunity to participate in the design competition, I was very excited about it because this is a significant location. We didn't take this project lightly. I grew up in the Bay Area, started working in the Bay Area, grew up in the East Bay Area, not just the Bay Area. And so this is a site I was very familiar with and felt compelled to do my best. In listening to the client's needs and the reaction that he had from the last meeting he had had here, two things are rung true. One is that you were looking for quality and he was looking to create a hotel that was a home away from home. In a hotel, we have many units. This is a challenge, but I think that there are examples around the world where this has happened, even in the East Bay. I think there are hotels that come to mind that when people think of something that's warm and friendly, they think of those hotels. Some of the Canadian Pacific Hotels have that feeling to them. I think that the Clermont has that feeling to it. I've always been a fan of Maybeck. I love the Craftsman era. I think that starts to lend detail and human skill to a project. And so that was where we took our inspiration from. In articulating the mass, and I don't know if it's okay for me to walk over here without a mic, but...
Yeah, there's a mic that you can grab.
I'll hold it up and if I start losing me, just yell at me. We really just tried to come back to some of the classics of architecture where we created an articulated top, a crown. I think that with that, I'll go ahead and step down and again, just say that we're here to answer any questions. We, oh, you know, the one thing I did want to mention is, just point out, I knew there was one more item. And that is that if you look at the scale of these buildings, you'll notice that this is pretty much the scale and I think was developed by Mr. Heller. We also brought a model, but I think his was more complete. But he's talking about a building which is either five or six stories with a mechanical tower above it. Typically, an office building is 13 feet floor-to-floor. A hotel is nine feet floor-to-floor just because they're a different construction type. And so a six-story building is about the equivalent of a nine-story building, I think. But you can see for yourself the distance between the masses, the amount of open space around this building. And I respectfully submit that I think that this is a good building. And I respectfully submit that I think that this is a good building. It respects the urban context. It respects the circulation patterns, respects pedestrian, and we're proud to submit it.
Good evening, members, Chairman. Again, I'm Pete Cruz. I'm with Hardage Suite Hotels. I just wanted to come back again and reemphasize how hard our staff has tried to come back through and work with the city and work with Michael Pyattak, who has been a tremendous resource for us and has, I think, as well for the city. The project is much better because of him. We have also, as Doug Austin just indicated, we're trying to respond again to everyone that has been, so they feel part of the process. We've come back on the backside of the facade and created an east facade that is really a great-looking -- from as you coming over the overpass, you're wondering if you are at the front or the back of the hotel. There is no backside to this hotel. The plant material that we will have in a parking lot will be substantial. There won't be any sticks out in that parking lot, believe me. The area all around the hotel will be richly landscaped around it. One of the other items I might mention as well is the parking situation. We were entirely comfortable, as is the neighboring property owner, Mr. Graham, who is -- we've talked to this process, and he's been involved in the development of this project from the start. And obviously, he is comfortable with the parking situation as it is now. One last thing is, I'll just talk quickly about the building elements. The building elements that we've talked about, whether they be a simulated stucco or plaster facade, or if we do use a drive-it, there have been tremendous improvements, of course, from what Mr. Heller has indicated about some of the faults within the drive-it system. There has got to be, you have to consider the financial constraints of a project this large, and it's not, you've got to look for material that will satisfy the requirements, but it doesn't necessarily pay to spend a lot of money on stone all the way up to twelve stories high, that no one can really appreciate at that level. I think that's pretty much everything. One last.
One last comment, and I think it's important, is in our discussions on Wednesday, we basically agreed to go back and look at two alternatives. One was an alternative I suggested, which I think was not acceptable to Mr. Heller, which was to look at the articulation as the mass existed. His suggestion was that perhaps the building be one bay less wide and one story taller. And so I'm confused by the comments that this building is too tall. I think his comment was more, he was not happy with the proportion of the building. In my professional opinion, making the building one bay less wide and one story taller would not have been a significant change. It would have been a significant change for us, because we would have had to start over again. However, I think that we've more than addressed the issues concerning the way the massing is broken up with the articulation.
If I might, we'd be happy to respond to any questions that you might have.
Well, before we go through that, I want to make sure we're here, everybody, and then we'll close, and then we'll ask specific questions.
That's the end of our group.
Right.
I'm Dan Norris. I'm a principal with Where I'm Development. Just a couple of quick comments. Number one, I work daily with Rich. We talk about everything. He's never mentioned that he had approved any design on this project. We go over all our meetings together. Number two, the building that we're designing right now actually fits an FAR of 2.0 or in excess and parks on the site by excavating. That's an economic decision, so when you are limited to your FAR, it's because you want to start from ground zero and build up and not excavate and build podium parking or anything like that. And number three, listen to what you've heard. They've done a very good job of defending their building, but they've completely ignored the issues that have been presented to you as to the adequacy of the negative declaration.
Anybody else? Public hearing's closed. Okay. Who wants to start?
Well, I'm okay with the mitigated negative declaration as presented, and I've long held the opinion that it is important to the development of Emeryville for the Planning Commission to restrain itself in its criticism of the architectural merit of each project.
See, Andy, I'm just not used to you being so restrained. It must be the drugs you're on because of the pain you're in, right? I'd like to, you know, say, I concur with you on the architecture. We have, going all the way back to the Jelly Belly building, the Jelly Bean building, which is yours, which I thought was very interesting and very creative, and it was pretty much panned by the majority of the Planning Commissioners way back then. I've always felt that architects should be able to express themselves as they choose fit, because I'm a novice, and I don't think that what I think of it architecturally, it's important, as long as it fits. So I just wanted to comment on that. I wanted to say something to the traffic consultant. You don't need to get up. I just wanted to comment on this. I've been on the Planning Commission for twelve years, and I've had a variety of EIRs and a variety of negative declarations and traffic reports, and it's really amazing that whoever the consultant is that was hired by the applicant that's in front of us always manages to put together a traffic report where the traffic works for the project. And so tonight, we've sort of heard you represent people like Safeway, McDonald's, and they're obviously building in places that are totally urban areas, and I'd like to know how you manage to make those traffic reports meet the requirements for their area, and then you come here and you manage for it not to meet, because this is not your client, because your client asked you to. So I've really come to a point where I've realized that, you know, everybody does what they have to do to fit the situation, and I prefer to just look at it from a realistic point of view as a novice, which is what I am. I live here. I live right across the street from the project. I walk this town all the time. I do not believe that this project is going to put an iota of any kind of traffic increase that I will ever notice. So notwithstanding all the rules and all the regulations and all the sequels, you know, looking at it from that point of view, I just wanted to say, you know, a lot of this is just bunk. Thank you.
Chris, you reminded me of a question that I had, which was, I don't see among the conditions of approval a requirement that the parking not owned by the applicant be allocated for, in the case of the hundred-and-twenty-odd spaces, for the exclusive use of the hotel for the life of the use permit.
So there isn't a condition like that.
So the parking is not guaranteed, even though it's counted for the parking requirements under the mitigation of the negative declaration?
The parking requirements are met, because there's going to be an additional amount of parking provided, meeting the city's parking requirements for the hotel. However, there are CCNRs that rule this property and the public market property.
Okay.
That provide reciprocal agreements for the use of some parking between them.
And it's presumed that the hundred-and-twenty spaces being on the east side of the building will be more likely used by the users of the hotel.
Except during periods when they may be used by other people.
Right, okay. But there is there, since some of the land is not owned by Christie Avenue Partners and is owned by the city, is there an arrangement whereby the parking on the city's land will be guaranteed to be kept in its use as parking during the term of the use permit?
I think that will be handled by the lease agreement or the other instrument that is recorded or executed between the Hardage Group and the city.
I'd be more comfortable, I'd be more comfortable if there was a requirement guaranteeing that the land allocated under the proposal for parking be used as parking exclusively during the term of the use permit, because I could imagine, since some of it is not in the control of either of the signers of the owner participation agreement, that another use could be put to the land, for example, owned by the city.
Okay. And you'd want that within the use permit rather than within the agreement to use that for parking between the city and Hardage?
I don't care where it is. I'd like to see it enforceable as a provision, though.
Am I next?
Yeah. Go on.
Okay. As you see, I've made a lot of notes. I disagree, of course, with previous speakers. I would not okay this negative declaration. I think going from forty or fifty-five feet and allowing up to a hundred-and-forty feet is way too much variance. I think this whole project is too massive, too bulky, and frankly, not very nice-looking, in my opinion. I have spent a lot of time driving around Emeryville. I've lived here over fifty years, and it's my town, and I love it. And I'm very, very careful about what we're going to put in this town. I think we've been careful about the development and the buildings. I went and looked at it from the Amtrak station, and I visualized this huge deal. And it started out, I didn't get to these pictures right away. Then I did. Then I looked at the before and after pictures. And before I had seen the pictures, I was a little, you know, thinking, well, maybe, you know, maybe. But after I saw the before and after pictures, I realized I couldn't do it. I could not accept a building that looks like that for Emeryville. I think the space there that they're covering is way too small. It's going to overpower everything. It's going to overpower everything. I was concerned, too. I think there's something in the deal about the pile driving. It was never mitigated. I was here, I worked at the Emeryville Market a long time ago, when it was just after it had still a building on it from Patco, and there was still a lot of toxic waste all around. In fact, they had yellow ribbons separating some of the areas, and we weren't supposed to go there. Then all of a sudden, nothing was done with it, and the ribbons, they took them down. So who knows what went on there? But we were in the old building, and that's when they started building PPP, Civic Park Plaza, and you never heard so much noise in all your life with all the piles that they drove in there. And looking at Andy now, I have to say, Chris, I approved of his building, too. I liked it, the Jelly Bean. Anyway, this here, like I say, I have gone up and down and all around the different areas and looking, and all I can see is a great big, huge, massive, and I'm not sure, I'm too fond of your materials and your colors either. So as you see, you have someone here that will not go along with your plans, and I wanted to say that the plans you came in with the first time was just a plain rectangular building, very, very poor design. And we, I don't recall that we told you we wanted to go up that high, and we wanted just a nice building that wasn't like that. But you've come in now and think that because you've done this level here and that level there and another level over here, and why go way up so high for, what is that, the elevators? The tower? It's not my kind of building for Emeryville, I'm sorry to say. So let me see, I probably have a few more bad things to say, too. I think it's going to be a very difficult place to get to, for one thing, too, a little curvy throat there. Whether they're going to do something about that, I don't know, but that would be for any kind of a place that's going to go in there. I guess that's about all I can say. I don't like it. It's as simple as that. I discussed this with some friends, and I said, "I feel very bad, because I realize the city would love to have revenue from a hotel. I know that, and I know I should try to go along with that." But they said, "You've got to vote the way you feel, not because you think somebody else wants you to vote yes for it." In good faith, I cannot vote for this. I cannot say I like it. I do not like it. That's it. Sorry. I want to tell you one thing. I appreciate all the work you've done on it. I know you've guys have spent a lot of time and thought and everything, but, and I think the staff has, too, and I was a little surprised that they would go along with something like this. Now we're through.
Well, I think the architects and the developer have responded to input from staff and from the design consultant and from the Planning Commission. We told them to go back and break up the mass. I believe they've done that. And I think they've done a good job of hiding the mass. I expect that the property owners to the east will disagree with that, and they have. I think that the staff findings for the negative declaration are researched, and they're reliable, and they're defendable. It's not my job to determine if they are or they aren't. I think that, I don't think I'd have any problem voting for this. Gary?
I actually echo Paul's comments. When the Hardage Group came in front of us in March, it was, and it wasn't too, I know Gary's look on his face when he left the meeting, it was kind of down. To say the least, right? Yeah. This building's come a long way since March, and even with the new east face, that was going to be my big question. And if the east elevation actually comes anywhere near what it looks like now, for people who come from the triangle side of town to get on this side of town, will actually have an aesthetically pleasing building to look at when they cross the bridge. From March, it would have been a definite no, to now, where it's a yes for someone who's grown up here. I really like the design. As far as the neg deck, I think I will respectfully disagree with the people who have been retained and probably been paid very well to be retained. I think the city, that can be sorted out for the people who sort those things out, and I'd like to see this go forward. And I'm sure we'll see those same people on their development later on this year or early next.
I would like to say to Dorothy that, you know, we've not been noted for having six-oh and seven-oh all the time, and it's a good sign that we have some disagreement. We need to have that, so please don't.
It's usually me.
So don't feel bad about that at all.
Oh, I don't. I don't feel bad at all. I don't feel a bit bad. I'm just unhappy, that's all.
Okay. The city --
The city of Emeryville has a process in place, and the process is, I think, working quite well with the city council, the planning commission, and the staff. And this is brought forth by the fine projects that we've had. Even this project, when it first came, Gary went out with, I didn't think he was going to come back, to tell you the truth. But the process works well when we get feedback at appropriate times, so adjustments can be made. I find totally inappropriate the slate flurry of letters and consultants and everything else where there is no time to respond. I think it's contrived, personally. I do have a couple of questions, but before that, I will say that I was impressed with the design that you made previously, but your addition to the east side is outstanding. I think it's really addressed quite a number of the issues, and you have tried to be responsive, I know that. Again, I'm very disappointed that Mr. Robinson's in here to explain some of his statements to me on the phone, and also the fact that his letter indicates his problems with the mass, and yet he's never written or contacted anyone about the mass being an issue for six months. This is what I'm very confused about, much to the confusion that someone else mentioned about going up the floor and narrowing the floor. Questions I have are wind study. What is the issue on the wind study?
I have Ann Moore in the audience, who helped me with the initial study, to make a comment about that.
My name is Ann Moore. Moore Consulting Offices in Santa Rafael, California. As stated, I assisted Claudia in the preparation of the draft mitigated negative declaration. We found that we did not expect wind to be a problem for this project because of its distance from other buildings. I think most of you are very familiar with the situation near at hand, where there really is a wind problem from a tall building, right at 2200 down the street and the complex of buildings there. And I think you all know from your experience there, that you're blown by the wind when you're very close to that building and the other buildings that are there. In fact, it's those very tall buildings close to each other that even aggravate the wind problem. As you move away from that building, 250, 300 feet, certainly even long before you get that kind of distance away, you don't experience significant wind difficulties. That was the basis of the finding in the negative declaration. A condition has been added, because our concern, if we had any at all, and it's not an environmental impact kind of a concern, it's a design concern, was we wanted to make sure that the way the building was designed, that the major entrances to the building, that there wouldn't be localized difficulties right there. We expect no problems away from the site, and had no basis for finding or recommending that there be the kind of studies that are done in downtown San Francisco, for example, that Mr. Heller is very familiar with, where the issues are quite different, and it's really talking about that pedestrian experience very close to those buildings and the kind of interactions that you have with many tall buildings close to each other.
Thank you very much. Question about the traffic study. We had a traffic consultant?
Yes, we did. We had the firm of CCS, who was helping us with the Bay Shale Mound realignment and some of the parking and traffic studies that we've been doing as a result of constructing that roadway. So having someone of that experience and background who has worked in the area, we requested that they do this study, and I have a couple of specific comments regarding the traffic comments that were made this evening. First, just let me state generally that in adopting a negative declaration and reviewing the information before you, which includes the initial study and all the documentation and testimony that you hear tonight, the standard that you need to use to substantiate or determine whether something is a substantial or significant impact is based on substantial evidence that you have before you end the record for the project. So in looking at some of these impacts previous to tonight, during our review of the project with experts that we were working with with regard to visual, shadow, and traffic, and given our large amount of environmental information we have developed in this community over the last four or five years, we made those determinations at staff level, and those are documented in the initial study. So that should be your standard of review, and that certainly was mine in looking at some of these issues that have been brought up tonight. With regard to the traffic study, we did look at a number of different trip generation rates, based on actual surveys that have been conducted by a variety of engineering firms and traffic information sources. So those are in the attachment to the initial study. We had trip generation rates anywhere from .44, .75, .87, .76. What we did was, we were on the conservative side, and we looked at all suite hotels and regular hotels, and came up with a good balance in the middle somewhere, based on what we believed to be the most accurate representation for this type of hotel in this type of area. So that takes care of that. With regard to parking demand, I know I addressed this during my initial comments to you, but I just want to reiterate that we did do actual parking studies. We did actual parking counts at the public market area during different times of the day and different times of the week. And we found out, what you already know, having used the public market area, that during the week, most weekdays and weeknights, there is not a parking problem there, and that area where the hotel is proposed is hardly ever used. However, there are peak weekend times, and I want to preface that there were parking spaces available, and there will be parking spaces available, because at least 40 to 60 spaces were blocked off because of the construction of the pedestrian overcrossing. And in addition to that, given the development of this site and the revisions to the site plan and the striping plan at the public market now, because of the construction of Bay Shale Mound, there will be additional parking created for the entire area when this project is completed.
Okay. Now, the adequacy of the shadow study, we've chatted about this a little bit, but you feel comfortable with that?
I feel that this was a standard methodology, that standard times of the day and times of the year were reviewed, and I would not, again, this is my finding, and you have to concur with this, I would not consider the trains, waiting for a train, a significant public open space, particularly on December 21st at 4 o'clock. What are we doing here? We have to be, there has to be a reasonable framework within which to work.
And as far as the landscaping is concerned, we're not going to allow sticks in the can?
The landscaping requirements that are required by the zoning ordinance have been met with the revised plans before you tonight.
Okay, that's all the questions I have. Anybody else have any other questions? Okay.
I'd like to make one correction to the draft initial study. On page six of the document, under geologic problems, under a fault rupture, we have marked potentially significant unless mitigation incorporated for that, but it should be no impact, because there are not faults running through the city. So that impact is, should be no impact, not potentially significant. Just wanted to do that, to make sure that that was corrected for the final study.
Any other comments?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the negative declaration with Andy's language. Do you have that language?
The condition regarding the parking?
Yes.
Andy, we just wanted to make the clarification. It appears that that parcel of land will be given or sold to the developer, and with that, it would be appropriate to look or consider a condition of approval within the use permit, saying that that parcel of land be used exclusively for parking, under the terms and conditions of any parking requirements related to the property for the life of the project. Is that something, is that what you had in mind?
Sure, that works. So we have a motion? Do we have seconds?
I'll second them. So that would be a resolution approving use permits 96-3, design review 96-7, and variance 96-4, with the conditions of approval as revised, adding condition number 1J regarding the parking being, the parking on the city-owned site, or the parcel being dedicated solely to parking through the life of the project, and approving or adopting a mitigated negative declaration for this project, as you have before you, with all the findings.